Okay. Good evening, welcome to tonight's February 11th Planning Commission meeting. I'll call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. Ms. Ms. Howe, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Schilling.
Here.
Ms. Williams. Mr. Magnner.
Here.
Ms. Schulist.
Here.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Pape.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Thank you. Oh, Mayor Anderson.
Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, thank you. Please feel free to join me for tonight's opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we especially thank you tonight for our reign, our community, our country, and the freedoms that we've been bestowed. I ask for your guidance tonight, your wisdom, and we appreciate your assistance with this meeting. In your name, I thank you, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move to approval of the agenda. May I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
McDonald, Mayor Anderson. Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Ms. Schulist.
Aye.
Mr. Pape.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Howe, do we have any citizens signed up for comments tonight? No. No citizens' comments. We will move on to approval of the minutes. As a reminder, this is for both the regular meeting and the work session from January 14th. May I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Pape McDowell. Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote? It was Pape McDowell.
McDonald.
McDonald, I'm sorry. It already feels like it's Friday for some reason, doesn't it?
Mr. Pape.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling. Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Ms. Schulist.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Stain.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you. We have no items on the old business, so we'll move directly into tonight's new business, starting with item number one, PC Resolution, PC 0225, Final Platte Aiden Woods Phase Four. This is a 20.55 acre site, map 46F, Group E, Parcel 69. Current zoning is R20, property owner, A1 Home Builders. We will first start with the staff report before moving for motion.
T-Square Engineering has submitted a final plat for Phase Four of the Aiden Woods Residential Development. The entirety of the development contains 151 single-family detached residential lots. The property for Phase Four was rezoned to R20 at the May 2nd, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. Phase Four contains 20 single-family residential lots, 20.55 acres, as well as two open space, two open spaces. Additionally, Phase Four will create one new 50-foot public right-of-way that will connect to Pine Street and create an intersection with the existing Bear Trace Road that currently terminates at Pine Street. There is no portion of the property in Phase Four that is located within a flood hazard area. There is an existing pond and wetland area in the northern portion of the property. All proposed aspects of, in construction, the Phase Four is located outside of the existing pond, pond, and designated wetland area. The properties to the north and one property to the west are located within Williamson County and currently zoned MGA 5. Property to the east contains Bowie Park and is zoned AR 15A. And properties located to the south contain Phase Three of Aiden, of Aiden Woods Development and are located within the city of Fairview and zoned R20. All exist, all surrounding land uses, with the exception of Bowie Park, are single-family residential in nature. This area is designated as New Residential Medium Neighborhood and within the Fairview, Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Notes, the appropriate land use is a single-family detached residential. All phases of Aiden Wood Residential Subdivision does contain single-family detached residential uses and is in line with the appropriate land uses and zoning of the Fairview Forward 2040 Plan. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission approve the Aiden Woods final plat, final plat for Phase Four in order to create 20 single-family detached lots, create one new public right-of-way, create two open spaces, and install all necessary stormwater, water, and wastewater infrastructure, as it was resubmitted on January 23rd, 2025. I'll also add that it is, does match and is in keeping with master development plan as well as construction plans. So no changes on this plat compared to other previously approved items.
Thank you, sir, for that. May I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve. Pape, Mayor Anderson. Before we begin, do we have a representative for tonight's? Sir, could you just state your name and address, please?
Louis Sloyne with T-Square Engineering. We're in 111 Southeast Parkway Court, Franklin. Here to answer any questions you guys might have or agree with the staff report. It's generally, generally in compliance with the previously submitted documents.
All right, thank you very much. We'll open it up for the Planning Commission for comments, questions.
Mr. Chair.
And Mr. King.
The only comment I had, I spoke with the, both planning staff and engineering staff this, this morning. The difference between the, or one thing that wasn't noted well on the construction plan was the easement running through the properties along Crowcut Road. So there is a sewer easement that's running, not directly through the middle, but through a partial of the, the properties on Crowcut Road. It was labeled as a utility easement on the construction plan, did not, you know, say anything about sewer. So it is a sewer line that runs through there. Again, spoke with the staff and they thought it was appropriate to get noted on there that no structures to be within that easement, just because the extents of the building site do kind of run past that easement. There is enough square footage between the, the setback on the front of the property to the easement to, to properly build a structure according to the subdivision guidelines. I just don't think it's, the way, it's a little confusing on the way that it's laid out. But just a leader with a note saying no structures within the easement, I think, would be more than sufficient just to clear it up.
We can, we can do that.
Typically, we sign the final plat. If, if that's okay with the applicant, if you would just like to get that back to the city staff and we can get that executed.
Yes, we can definitely do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. King. Other comments, questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Pape.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Ms. Schulist.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Item PC 0225 passes by a vote seven to zero. Moving on to item number two. PC Resolution, excuse me, PC 0325, excuse me, this is annexation. Kelly Hollers, annexation of an 8.66 acre, map 21, parcel 17.01. Property owner is John Hollers. Would you please read the staff report for us?
As you stated, Mr. Hollers is the owner of the property and he has submitted his annexation request for the parcel he owns, located at 7922 Crowcut Road, designated as tax map 21, parcel 17.01. Property does currently contain 8.66 plus or minus acres, currently located in Williamson County and zoned MGA 5. The entirety of the property is located within the urban growth boundary of city of Fairview. It is contiguous to the current Fairview municipal boundaries as well. Parcels located to the north, south, and west are located within Williamson County. Parcel to the west is part of the Bell Haven Development, located within the municipal boundaries of Fairview. The parcel land at 7922 Crowcut Road is classified as rural settlement and the Fairview Forward 2040 Plan classifies five zone districts and two land uses as appropriate. The five zone districts are AR 15, AR 5, RS 40, RS, RS M 40, and R 20 with a conservation development overlay. Two appropriate land uses are agriculture and single-family detached residential. Section 5-105 of the Fairview Zoning Warrants requires that properties that are annexed into the city be zoned RS 40, unless otherwise requested by the applicant. The applicant owner is not requesting a different zoning. They are okay with the RS 40 zoning that would be placed onto the property if annexation is approved. They've also stated that they would be looking to divide off one parcel and create, for one, one additional detached single-family home. The application for the annexation does note that water and sewer taps are currently located at the road and future residents would be able to utilize conventional water and sewer services from Water Authority of Dixon County. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission provide a favorable recommendation to the Fairview Board of Commissioners to approve this request to annex the entirety of the property located at 7922 Crowcut Road as indicated on the attached map and with following conditions of approval. That being that the annexation request would be placed on the Thursday, March 6th Board of Commissioners meeting agenda for consideration with potential for a public hearing and second reading being held on Thursday, Aug., April 6th, 2025. Additionally, all staff comments to be, need to be addressed by March 6th, 2025. Just for you all to know, the staff comments are just requesting additional information on the adjacent properties list as well as, staff made a general statement that the zoning would be R 40 if the annexation was successful.
Thank you very much. May I hear a motion for PC 0325?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve. Mayor Anderson, Ms. Schulist. Do we have a representative tonight for this annexation? Sir, would you mind? If you, you're welcome to join us if you wish. If you'd you state your name and address for the record, please.
Kelly Hollers, 7922 Crowcut Road.
All right, thank you, sir. Any additional commentary you wish to add, other than what all the, that was stated?
He pretty much summed it up.
All right, thank you very much, sir. We'll open it up now for the Planning Commission. As a reminder, this is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners who will ultimately decide and approve the annexation. Comments, questions from the Planning Commission? You know, I'll just add, reason why I personally am in favor of this, as I was evaluating the property. At first, it seems like it's standalone there on Crowcut, but when you look at the properties coming off of Highway 96, those have been annexed. So, you know, at some point, it just almost seems natural, for this area, in my opinion, that it would most likely either become part of the city or potentially could become a, you know, a little bit more of a, an access point for, for the area. So that's, that's my personal opinion. I'd be happy to entertain, understand anybody else's counterpoint.
Mr. Chair.
Mayor Anderson.
I do want to point out that this property is contiguous with other city property and also in our urban growth boundary. So I am, am in favor of this as well.
Thank you. Hearing no other comments, questions? Thank you, sir. Ms. Howe, would you please call for the vote?
Mayor Anderson. Aye.
Ms. Schulist.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Pape.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Item PC 0325 passed by a vote of seven to zero and will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as stated in the report. Last item on new business is PC Resolution, PC 0425. Subdivision Regulation Variance Request. This is for the reserves on Chester. I think it's Resic Court. Somebody can correct me on that later. Map 42, parcel 136.02. Current zoning is RS 40. Property owner, Duke and Duke LLC. Would you please read the staff report for us, sir?
I will read the staff report. I will forward any type of questions to Curtis, he's been handling this more than I have and, and related to subdivision regulations and road design. So Curtis will be able to answer the questions you all may have. This is a request, or the reserves on Chester is a single-family detached residential development, contains 46 lots on the tax map 42, parcel 136.02. Contains a total of 66.21 acres. The development is creating three new public rightsway, one of which is Resic, Resic Court. It is a cul-de-sac 50-foot wide right-of-way with curb and gutter, five-and-a-half-foot wide grass strips, five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the street. Proposed length of the roadway is approximately 150 feet and provides access to 12 separate residential lots. The overall design of the court will remain as approved in regards to width, sidewalks, and length. The developer is requesting this variance from the subdivision regulations for the approved cul-de-sac in order to reduce the slope of the street, which in turn will assist in the accessibility to the lots. The proposed change in grading, the roadway is not able to make the K-value necessary to meet the required design speed of 30 miles per hour as required within section 4-106 of the Fairview subdivision regulations. Therefore, the, the variance request is from section 4-106 in table 4-106B of the subdivision regulations in order to lower the design speed of the road from 30 miles per hour down to 25 miles per hour. There are four standards for a variance in section 1-112. The standards are, granting of the variance will not be detrimental to public safety, health, or welfare, or be interest to other property or improvements in the neighborhood where the property is located. Staff's perspective, if approved, variance would not be detrimental due to the request being a reduction in the design speed, not any type of changing of the current design of the road width or sidewalks or any requests to not install anything required for the roadway. Number two is conditions upon which the request for variance is based or unique to the property for which the variance is sought, not applicable generally to other property. The requested variance would be applicable, would not be applicable to other properties whether adjacent or the areas of the city due to the request being based on proposed design for this particular court and the existing topographic conditions of this particular location. Item number three, cause of particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved. A particular hardship to the owner must, would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of regulations would be carried out. The variance request is not self-imposed and that severe topography does exist within the area of the parcel. The applicant is requesting the variance to lower the design speed of the road, which is necessary given the K-value following the lessening of the slope of the roadway to make lots more accessible. Number four, the final condition, the variance will, will not in any manner alter the provisions of the land development plan, major thoroughfare plan, or the Fairview zoning warrants. The variance request, if approved, will not alter any provisions or regulations found in the Fairview Forward 2040 Plan, current major thoroughfare plan, or the regulation, Fairview zoning warrants, as the requested variance is from the subdivision regulations and not related to any other city regulation. Staff recommends Planning Commission approve the variance request from section 4-106.2 and table 4-106B of the Fairview subdivision regulations to permit the reduction of the road design speed on Resic Court from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion on PC 0425?
I make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Schulist, Mayor Anderson. Do we have a representative tonight for this item? Sir, if you could just please restate your name.
Louis Sloyne with T-Square Engineering.
Thank you very much.
Happy to answer any questions. I believe they covered pretty much everything. It's, the, the big portion of this is just to be able to get better access to those lots up there rather than, rather than it being a 14-foot cut to get up to those lots and, you know, have to do some extreme grading to service those lots. It's really trying to reduce that cut and make it, make it, make those lots better for, for the subdivision.
Mr. Chair.
Mayor Anderson.
Um, Curtis, typically are not the subdivisions 25 miles an hour?
So our speed limit posted is 25 miles per hour in all subdivisions. The engineer designs the road based off a 30 mile-per-hour design speed, so it's almost like a factor of safety. This, in this case, it would be a 25 mile-per-hour design speed, which is five less than what we require in the subregs. And Louis, correct me if I'm wrong, you'd be posting 20 miles an hour?
Yes, yes, we'd be willing to post 20.
I see, so 30 to 25, and this would be 25 to 20.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Chair.
Ms. Schulist.
The graph on the bottom here, what do the, the blue versus red lines depict?
So those, those red lines are the approximate grades coming in. This was just kind of an exhibit to show before we did final design on it. The blue is the approximate curve, the vertical curve that would fit there. And it, the difference between the black line and the blue line is the amount of hill that would not be cut down essentially. So the blue is what we are aiming for with this variance, to be able to not cut down. I believe it's over 12 feet of cut in that area. And if we are able to get the variance, it would be a five-foot cut. So it's significantly less impact to that existing hill.
Something I'll add is, it's hard to see on the, on the monitor there, but kind of where the blue text is on the very top of that profile is where the existing grade is. So you can see the difference between where existing grade and proposed grade would be. He's just trying to minimize cut and that, that really, you know, it, it's advantageous because it also alters the limits of disturbance, which is good for, in any regards.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pape.
The question I was about to ask Curtis just kind of answered ahead of time, so you're, you're stealing my thunder. But I just wanted to make sure, I mean, the, the reality is, the whole point of this is to get closer to the existing grade, minimize disturbance, minimize cutting down more trees, and be able to have the lots blend into the existing topography better. So you have, to me, that's positive. And then you also have the positive of slower speed limit, safer conditions and everything. So that, that's, that's the whole reason for this. And, and it's not just the road. If you cut the road down, you're going to have to slope that out way further and just disturb way more land, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just to support my approval of this, I was going to ask about the slope because our table really refers you to some other reference manual for those calculations, but I just, I concur as well personally.
Louis, something I want to clarify. What was the previous slope on that, on that down slope after the crest? Was it 10%?
I believe it was 10% because that's all we could achieve with those curves with the 30 mile-an-hour speed limit. They just get so big, they ran into each other.
Gotcha.
Is 10 in the final slope?
No, the, the final is increasing it to, from 10 to 11.32%.
But that's not the most steepest drive in Nashville area, right? Okay. Okay.
I'll just add to that, by the naked eye, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference between 10 and 11%. Yeah, it's, it's not a drastic change, in my opinion.
Other thoughts, comments? All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Schulist.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Magnner.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Pape.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Motion carries for item PC 0425. Moving on with the agenda, we have no items to report on bonds and letters of credit. So we will move directly into the reports and discussion for the various sections of, of the groups here, starting with the planning staff. I guess Mr. Greer is out this evening, but do we have any items to share on his behalf?
No, Ethan did not provide me anything specific to provide you all, so he is obviously out tonight and he has recently, well, over an hour ago, welcomed their son. So that's the only update I have, if you haven't heard yet.
Thank you. City Mayor, Mr. Donery.
Uh, thank you. The only thing I have tonight is just wanted to remind everyone that City Hall will be closed on Monday, the 17th in observance of President's Day, but all of you have outstanding rest of your week.
Thank you, sir. City Engineers.
Thank you, Tom. Going to add that to my calendar. No, nothing tonight for me. Thank you all for the questions and, and the consideration.
Thank you. City Attorney.
No report, no additional children either, thank God.
Thank you very much. So we will follow our typical process of the Planning Commission comments, starting on the left. Mr. Pape.
Uh, just thank you to staff for putting everything together for tonight. A lot of details. I had some questions earlier this week and they were great about answering those. And to Ethan and his wife, congratulations, because I'm sure he's watching right now at home with that new baby.
He probably is.
So congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald.
I have nothing, nothing to add, other than just congratulating Ethan as well and, and his wife on their new baby.
Thank you. Ms. Schulist.
Um, the applicant that withdrew their application that we were going to have our work session on tonight, do we anticipate that that will come back next month for a works, a work session?
I was not part of that direct conversation, but the email I saw, I believe they had asked Ethan if they could just have an indefinite deferral until they are ready to come back and bring forth something new and for a work session. So at this point in time, it's, I guess it's a little bit of a to-be-determined. So not, I would not anticipate it next month.
Got it. All right, that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. King.
I'll just appreciate the staff and everything they do and answering our questions, putting everything together, but.
Thank you. Ms. Schilling.
Congratulations to them too. And on the baby thing, by the next meeting, I will be a first-time grandmother. So I'm excited about that. And thanks to everybody who works so hard.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson.
Thank you. Ethan, I know you're watching. Congratulations on your baby boy. And, um, let's see. Earlier Economic Development Officer Patty Carroll and I were at the Williamson County Economic Development Council meeting and Mayor Rogers Anderson gave us some information about the Green Belt and how over 50% of Williamson County is still green. So despite all of the development going on, Williamson County has over 50% of property that is still green, so that's encouraging. And it's well over 200,000 acres, so he wanted me to point out that. Also, we spoke with Jeremy Qualls, who, with his vision, the innovation hub that has taken over the old Williamson County Animal Shelter that's next to Franklin High School. I guess several weeks ago, we were at the groundbreaking and it's moving along quite nicely. I've asked him to come and speak at our Board of Commissioner meeting so that he can show his video and tell us all about the TCAT Innovation Hub out there in Franklin. It services all, all students in Williamson County, so it's not just for Franklin. It is for all students. And I know we have a lot of students here who may decide to go a different route than university and maybe want to get in the technical fields. This is a great opportunity to do that. So I encourage everyone, I will keep, make everyone aware of when this meeting is so that students who are interested in this can either watch online or be here at the meeting. Jeremy Qualls is an awesome human being. He had such a great vision for this when. being. He had such a great vision for this when we were on our leadership conference back in November. He showed us the video and outlined this great opportunity for our students. So, I'm really excited to get him to come and talk to our students out here. And as you know, the Williamson County Animal Shelter was moved over to Mack Hatcher and they have a wonderful facility there. So, we were excited to be able to, you know, use this old property, take that building down, and build the new innovation hub, which, if you ever have an opportunity to go over there and see it, it's quite amazing. He can talk to everyone about the partnerships with MTSU, Vanderbilt, BNA, and just different opportunities for our kids. So, also, the advisory committee has been selected for our urban growth boundary. We worked on that for over two years to get that accomplished and the state approved it. And now, the advisory committee has been selected and it's, there's no really selection process. It says in the, you know, in the paperwork for this that it's all the mayors plus Rogers Anderson. So, there's seven total. So, anyway, some good things. We got to hear from every municipality about what's going on in their communities. We heard one municipality how they worked through doing a, with their own census to help better see how their population has grown so that they can get grants and federal funding, which I've been interested in that myself. It's a pretty expensive process, but we're looking into alternative ways to get that accomplished with the state and GIS system instead of having to go like door-to-door and, you know, maybe not want to do it that way because a lot of people don't like, you know, people coming door-to-door like that. So, we're trying other, to find other options to save money for our community and also the GIS state system is a good alternative. So, with that, I think that's it. Thank you.
I just have one item besides just appreciate everybody's time and preparation. I think as we go through our twenty-twenty-five training sessions, one recommendation I would like to bring forward is have one or two folks from the planning commission just share your process that you go by to prep for the PC meetings. I think we all have a lot of great background and experience in our individual fields and I think everybody brings a unique approach to things. But, I think it'd just be neat to kind of share how various individuals prep, review, the process by which you go by. So, maybe we'll look forward to see how we can implement that going forward. Otherwise, thank you. I hope everybody has a blessed evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourn. Good evening.
They knew when the meeting ended.
I just cleared it.
Oh, no. No problem.
I'm listening.